It won't be pretty.
Oh.
Sounds like the aliens have brought it.
Where in the world?
In the state of Rhode Island.
Let's turn it off. It's on.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Steve, how are we going to break 15 minutes if we're starting late? Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the June 7, 2022, City Council Meeting, City of Wyndham. The consent agenda tonight includes the minutes of council minutes of May 17 and 18, utility commission, May 25. There's also a license for the amplification permit to Deanna Higginbotham at 7080 Plum Avenue and the regular bills. One quick question I had on the amplification permit was, in residential areas, are there anything, is there anything different as far as the application goes?
No.
Okay, all the conditions apply and?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything from the council? Okay. Do you wish to take action?
And make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion, Jason, second. Jenny, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Department heads, done. The chair is yours.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Dawn Ahmet, Library Director. I just wanted, I'm here to talk about our summer reading program that just kicked off on June's, no, actually, it was a week ago Monday, the 31st of May, no, Tuesday that would have been because it was Memorial Day. Anyway, I'm encouraging and we're encouraging the kids to come in and sign up for the summer library program this summer. And they're reading for, they set a goal for reading time, minutes set per week, and then they earn a prize each, each week that they come in after they've read for their goal. If they've met their goal, they reach, they get a prize. And so this lasts through the end of July. And right now, we have, we've had very good numbers so far. We have 71 kids that have signed up for the summer reading program, and this includes kids ages three and up, so kids can read and be read to. So we're really excited about the numbers. We have activities that are just starting this week. We have, our toddler story time is every Tuesday at 11 o'clock at the library, and this is for kids who are three years old and through kindergarten. So we have stories and, and games and songs to, to partake in on Tuesdays. And then on Thursdays, we have the lunch bunch, which the kids, they bring their lunches and we're reading a chapter book. So we're, we're reading through the summer a chapter book, and hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna try to keep that down at Island Park, or if things change, as far as construction begins on the shelter house, we'll move it and we'll let everyone know at that time. And that's Thursdays at 12:30 to 1 o'clock. And so Thursday, we begin that on June 9. And another fun thing that's going on for the summer reading program is, we're having a make and take craft table, one week out of every month. And so June, June 13th, next Monday, we begin a make and take table, and everything is, the theme this summer is read beyond the beaten path. So we're making everything like from the forest or from the parks. So the first one that they're making is a, is a nature crown. Another thing that's going on right now is Lana the Iguana is out and about on the square, and, and we've contacted the businesses around the square if they would like to participate. So Lana comes and visits them for two weeks, sits in their window, and if the kids find Lana, they take their picture with Lana in the window, and then they can come in and register and get a prize if their name is pulled for that week. We move Lana every two weeks. So right now, she is at her first location. And then one more thing I want to tell you about, next, next Thursday, June 16th, everyone's invited to our first program that we've had for two years, and this will be the pint-sized Pocas. And it's taking place at the Historical Society, at the Cottonwood County Historical Society at 1 o'clock. It's for all ages, and it's basically dance and history of Pocah and learning a little bit the steps or anything. I've never been to one of the programs, but I hear it's very fun. So I would like to have everyone come to the Historical Society at 1 o'clock next Thursday, the 16th. And that's free because it's, these programs are all sponsored by the Clean Water and Clean Water Land and Legacy Funds through the state of Minnesota. So, so I just wanted to give everyone a heads up about the summer reading program. It's never too late to come in to register, even if they can't make it in the first week or two. We've, we're here, you know, all summer to, to read, so we encourage the parents to bring in the kids or the kids to come in. So just wanted to give everyone a heads up about what's happening at the library this summer. That's it.
Any questions or comments for Dawn? I guess I'd like to say thank you for your continued work at the library and for everyone's kids out there that are listening, or parents have your kids and grandkids, look for Lana. So, thank you, Dawn.
Yep, she's a big red Iguana.
Okay, big red Iguana.
Big red and green Iguana. You can't miss her.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Okay. Seeing none. On the, on your location and on the media location, we do have a new resolution. This is just to clarify that we have a two-year in Ward Two, unexpired term. That's one that Lisa currently is in, and council member Ward Two also. That is for a four-year term. Council member for Ward One and the council member at large. Okay? We would like to do this by resolution. Anyone care to entertain that?
I would introduce resolutions designating the filing period for candidates for the city election.
Second.
Introduced by Marv, second by Jason. Any discussion or comments, clarifications? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Okay, that is declared and designated. Citywide cleanup debriefing and ad hoc committee proposal. This is being considered because the, I had three phone calls the morning of cleanup for clarifications. One was by the, the folks at Hometown picking up the debris and miscellaneous items. And for clarification on that, on the items, maybe the time of year, some additional fees or not supporting additional items, I think it'd be valuable now when it's fresh in our mind, is to have an ad hoc committee get together with myself, Steve Nasby, the collectors of both the recycling parts of it. There was concerns that all the metal was gone and, which, I, I like the idea of keeping it out of the landfill, but there, you know, either way, just so it's, it's, it's taken. So if we're going to have, that should be discussed and whatever the ad hoc committee would like to do. I would like to appoint Lisa Farag and Jenny Quaid to that ad hoc committee, as well as Steve, myself, and the people. Yep, and Denise Nichols. She's, yes, with the advertising. Some of my questions were on the items that we're allowed to pick up, nothing in bags, different things like that. And I think when, when I was called by the person, by Hometown, my response was do it the same as last year. So I did not hear any, you know, comments about last year, so my comment was do it the same as last year. And, and I, I think it was well done, and my exception was hazardous, you know, the batteries, anything like that, that are hazardous substance and light bulbs, that sort of thing don't belong in there. So, so if the council would agree with that, I would appreciate it to get that underway here within the next couple of weeks.
I could make a motion to accept the mayor's proposal for this ad hoc committee in regards to the cleanup.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by James. Any discussion? And you are willing to serve on that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next, personnel recommendations, EDA service agreement. I think we'll take this one step at a time. I would like to discuss some other options after extending our current EDA Administrator pro temp. Jim, he's waiting to see if he's hired again, so we'd like to take care of this to be extended as long as, I guess, we're, we have our need or Jim needs, has the ability to do this in 15, with a 15-day out notice to either party and continue that. So I think we should take that first, and then I'll bring up one other option. So is there a motion to approve the extension in 15, with, I guess indefinitely at this point until we have a 15-day notice from either party?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion, Jim, seconded by Marv. Any discussion?
I was thinking that maybe we should let the public know that there was a person who came and then it didn't work out for some reason and?
Yep, good, good point. Thank you. We did have an application. That offer was extended pending other items that would have to be done before it was presented to the council, and that person declined that position to facilitate his current, I guess, opportunities, so. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. One other thing that was brought up and discussed in brief was at a Personnel Committee meeting, I think Marv Grunig had another good option that the council should consider, and I'd like Marv to speak on that.
Well, I guess the thought was because we were having a bit of a problem getting applications for the economic development position, then what could we do to make it more acceptable for more candidates? And then the idea was maybe to add assistant administrator to the position. Wyndham in the past had an assistant administrator, but that position hasn't been filled since. So I guess to make the position more viable for more candidates, the idea was to add or create a economic development director, assistant administrator position.
And with that, Marv would, right now, would just kind of be asking the council, as I understand it, for the go-ahead to create, I guess, kind of a job description along with that and authorize Steve to proceed, so that would be ready for the next council meeting?
Yes, that was the thought for tonight, and, and maybe if we get candidates and then to fill that kind of a position, it would prove good for the future. And so that was kind of the thought.
And I know that succession planning is a good thing to do, but Steve, we're not chasing you out of here. I would like to make that on your minute notes, that we're not doing that. So Steve has plenty of time left, right, Steve? Okay, thank you. So with the council, I think that could be on consensus for now. Is that okay with everybody or any comments? Okay. You have the nod to proceed with that, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marv, for bringing that up. Okay, seasonal hiring. We just, as I've been instructed tonight, we just have one candidate, one has withdrawn the application, so your, the recommendation is to hire a seasonal hiring to Zady and Johnson. Is there a motion to approve that request?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Jenny, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Community, community center on call person. Lisa Sprague is interested in working some different shifts and attending bar, those type of things, starting at $12.50 per hour. Any questions for Steve, I guess, would be the one to answer him on this, but I see that it's in order?
I guess, what? Steve, are you going to be chasing things out there too?
Yeah, I, I talked to Jill this morning for quite some time. I also talked to their board chair today, and we've got a very good handle on what's, what's going on. There was apparently a little bit of confusion in the beginning, but it's straightened out now.
I suppose you'll spend your time reading at the library then. No. Yeah, that's all I was wondering because she asked me about it on Saturday, I guess it was, I worked Sunday out there, and of course, I'm, I'm not going to say this, do this, do that, but the person to talk to is, you know, so I guess she did.
That's right.
Cool.
Okay, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the hire of Lisa Sprague?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion, Jim, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. Steve, anything on their new? Okay, old business, city facilities tour. Well, I think we had an excellent first round. It included many different of the city facilities, and the most, I guess, engaging was at the wastewater treatment plant. Pardon me? Engaging, yeah, most active participation, active participation. Interesting, okay, we'll use that. I'm not going to say what a council member did out there, but I guarantee to the public the water going into the river is very safe. So is there anything you wanted to add to that, Jason?
Well, we have to practice what we preach, and so, yes, we can confirm from a, from a on-hands and hands-on person that the water is clean and suitable, and, and that person is still alive. That would be me.
Thank you for taking the taste test. We all appreciated that. The water is good coming out of the plant. It meets all the, the criteria for wastewater disposal and very clean. I, I think that was just a key to me, is how clean it looked and how clean it was proved to be. So that was very good. Other items, you know, the list was included in our, okay, in our packet of the ones yet to be held. We're looking at another four hours of interaction from the council and our department heads. Any dates?
So the, the dates, we talked about department head and to try to get this wrapped up for the council would be Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, the 28th, 29th, or 30th of June. I know that's after you're back from vacation, Mayor, but I didn't know how that may or may not fit with other folks, but those were dates that worked for my department head, so I thought I would put those out for your consideration.
On a Saturday? Oh, June.
June 28, 29, 30. Should be a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesdays, no for me.
Wednesdays, a yes for me.
I'm available all those days.
Wednesday?
I'm good on Wednesday.
Jim, Wednesday? I think we'll set it on Wednesday.
Okay, you want to have a motion, send a special meeting for that?
We would like a motion for, to hold a special meeting for the purpose of facility tours. Is there a motion of that effect?
I'd make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Jason, to schedule a special meeting of the city council. Same criteria, I would say, with the bus taking us around. It is an open meeting, however, transportation, if the public was going to attend, is on their own. So with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries. Council comments. Jim?
I don't really have anything, I guess, we just, you know. I hate to see all these people leaving. I mean, we got Jim now, and then we got Dawn, Spencer's gone, and Steve's going to be busy, people even find him. So, but I think there's a lot of good people out there that, even the committees and that, that probably would enjoy doing it. So with that, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Marv?
Well, like many of you guys and citizens of Wyndham that recycle aluminum cans for Riverfest, we've been kind of waiting to see where the pop can bin was going to land and talking to Tyan Marcy from the Chamber. She mentions that there no longer will be a pop can bin, so we can just recycle our aluminum cans in the waste man, management, green recycling containers that we all have. And she is reached in agreement with, with waste management that they will donate back to Riverfest. So I think that's a win for Wyndham. For those like me that had a garage full of aluminum cans waiting for a pop can bin, she mentions that you can take them down to the recycling building at, on Fairgrounds east of the arena and dump them there. But from now on, we can just put our cans in the normal recycling and, and you don't need that third container in the garage. So that's a good thing. So that's good.
Thank you, Marv. One question I have for you, is it only pop cans?
I believe anything aluminum works.
He wasn't going to be specific. Lisa?
I don't know, I may have been a little slow to notice, but I went down to Cottonwood Lake yesterday, and I noticed that the bathhouse had been painted. There was a beautiful rainbow on there, and, sorry, I cannot remember the saying, something like, "The world is a small town." But I had heard from John that it was the, someone from the Chamber, I believe, that had painted that, and I just wanted to say they did a beautiful job. It looks so nice down there, and I just think people should really appreciate that and drive slowly through there and admire the pelicans that swim there and the scene because it's absolutely beautiful.
Thank you, Lisa. Jason, I'm going to let you go next, so you have the opportunity about, talking about Riverfest a little bit, that's, everybody's enjoying and the great garage sales, you know, that's going on prior to our next speaker. So if you'd like to engage in that, Jason?
I won't take everything. Riverfest obviously is upon us, and we have a couple of days here until it's really headlong. There's lots of stuff going on, there's the parade, there's, like you mentioned, other musical things, people showing things, games and fun for the whole family. The itinerary is up on our website, I believe, and, and you can check it out and find something for your families, and we are very excited that in Wyndham, we have a lot going on in the summer. There's something for everyone, I believe, and you guys just have a great week.
Thank you. Jenny?
Yes, the garage sales were last weekend, and I think there were a lot of people in town enjoying, looking for some good finds at different people's rummage sales. And Riverfest, they had Miss Riverfest pageant last night and crowned our Miss Riverfest and Little Miss Riverfest. And there's just things going on all the rest of the week, having fireworks on Thursday, and then the music down at Island Park on Friday night and Saturday night, also just the parade, the turtle races, I mean, all the different things. I think the Chamber has done a really good job on their Facebook page, for those that are on there, about, you know, interviewing and talking to different people about the different events and things that are coming up and happening in town. So I think that's great if you want to hear more about what's going on. They're doing a good job of keeping people up to date, and I just really hope to see a lot of people out and about and taking advantage of it. Hopefully, we will have good weather and that we will see a lot of our friends and family around town and enjoy a safe weekend.
Thank you, Jenny. You missed one event that I'd like to specify that I really enjoy, a fishing tournament at Cottonwood Lake. And I'll be there with my grandkids and all weekend enjoying that with my grandkids, so I'll put in a plug for that. Also, please enjoy the, the parade. I was asked to be in there, but I'm committed to my grandkids, so that, I'll be partaking that with them. And, but I guess it, the, the season is here for Wyndham's Riverfest, and please enjoy it. The Chamber, you know, the, those folks have put together a, a good bunch of events, and say thank you to the Chamber members, Tyan and her whole crew, that she, the organizational part of it has worked very hard on that. So I do encourage the public to take, take advantage of the Riverfest in Wyndham. So Steve, do you have anything?
Just quickly, little mayor, let folks know that the- Just quickly, little mayor, let folks know that the pool will be doing a soft opening on Thursday with a few limited hours. It will probably be closed Friday and Saturday due to the, all the activities, the bans and whatnot down in Island Park that day. And then there is a free summer, or Sunday swim on June 12th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. So it is open to the public for free swim that Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00. So thanks to Tim and his crew and the water guys for getting that up and going, so.
Yeah, you bet. They worked hard on getting that back to operational status. Steve will be there at the pool? Oh, okay. Anything further from the council? We're done. Enjoy Riverfest, and the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent.